Hello, everybody, and thank you for joining us for for this webinar that's looking at the application of strategic energy management to school board portfolios. So we'll lay out the background of the project, the findings that we had and and then looking forward to some conversation with some of the participating school boards as this works. As we kind of work through to what we're suggesting is a is a good process for looking after the operational efficiency of whole portfolios of schools. Reza, can we have the next slide please? We begin all Climate Challenge Network events by land acknowledgement. We acknowledge respectfully the ancestral and unceded territory of the Inuit, the Métis, and First Nations people that share these lands with us. I am speaking here in Toronto from the traditional land of the Huron Wendat, the Haudenosaunee, the Anishinaabe and the Mississaugas of the Credit River, and we sincerely hope that the work that we're doing together here today honors our shared responsibility to the to the natural environment. Next slide please. Housekeeping. Please, this this session is being recorded. The recording will be available, so you don't have to take too many copious notes. You'll be able to find the recording on the Sustainable Schools website. If you have questions, please put them in the Q and A box. Natalie is tracking that, and if it fits within the conversation right now, then we will include it in the in the webinar, but otherwise, we commit to responding to everybody's questions. After the after the session, we will formally respond to any questions that are posted in the in the questions box. If you have any concerns about technology or or connecting to the webinar, please use the chat box. And once again, Natalie is monitoring that, and she will make sure that whatever is needed will be taken care of. Next slide, please, Reza. So our agenda. We'll do a bit of of introductions and and the background to this project, the project goals, the sponsors, the the organizations that are involved. We then want to share the findings we found in individual schools that covering some key areas that you can see listed there and the and looking to prioritize and will then put together what for your consideration, we think is a logical flow for looking at schools of interest, which are ones either with high savings potential or ones that have shown unexpected increases in energy use. Now, a logical process for following those through, and then we're looking forward to a panel discussion with the participating boards around the primary areas of interest, the areas that they think are most important, where where this can go to in 2023, and we'll have a poll during that conversation of all of the participating boards, where we'll ask for your priorities, the areas that you think are most important for achieving and sustaining high levels of energy efficiency in individual schools. So this is the agenda we'll be working through, and let's get started. Reza, the next slide please. So I think people are aware of the Sustainable Schools program. My name is Ian Jarvis. I'm the Executive Director of Climate Challenge Network. The program is working with school boards across Canada and now into the United States with the specific goal of looking at greenhouse gas emissions reductions, using data to identify opportunities and to verify that improvements have been made. So Sustainable Schools has been in operation for well over a decade. Over the over the past five years, we've been reporting on the actual rankings of Ontario school boards, the savings achieved, and this is a continuation of that work. Next slide please. So the background to this project in the in the 2021, you see that report on the right hand side, and all of these reports you can find at the Sustainable Schools website. The 2021 report commented on, again, the rankings, as you can see in the little box there on the right of of the of the 20 most energy efficient school boards in Ontario, spoke to the achievable savings potential in the in the little box at the bottom there. And we also commented for the first time that year on the actual savings achieved in 2018-19 compared to the previous year. And the intent there was finding the schools that were making the biggest savings would provide insights into best practices that other boards, other schools could follow. But the unexpected outcome of that work, which we'll look at in a bit more detail in a moment, was many schools showed large unexplained increases from year to year. And that really triggers the interest in this area. We appreciated the participation of industry partners and the ISO in looking at this. But there's real interest now in understanding why those increases happen. Intellectually, we know that people switch things to manual. They switch things to 24/7. They respond to immediate concerns. And there's not always the connection to what impact that has on energy usage. But more generally, we wanted to know how many of these increases are occurring and how many are explainable by by events that are known and how many are unexplained where by taking strategic energy management action, they could be readily identified and and corrected sooner rather than later. So the project background of of this work was the 2021 top energy performing school boards report that 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 revealed some unexpected and interesting outcomes. Next slide please. So get that box you saw below. This is kind of blowing it up, that these are the numbers that were in play. So looking at all 5,000 schools across the province, schools, administration buildings. This is the savings potential that has been identified. If all of the individual schools can get to a good performance level, this is not leading edge, it's not bleeding edge. This is if all schools are operating their existing facilities at the level of the top quartile board. Top quartile schools, elementary schools, secondary schools, administration buildings. We can lower utility costs by $117 million a year and emissions by almost a quarter million tons a year. These are big numbers. They're important in the current context. And this really is the trigger behind the whole Sustainable Schools initiative, which is quantify the potential, help boards make improvements, track results, and share those best practices with everybody. Next slide please. So the that being the the potential by getting all of the all of the schools in the province to a good level. This was the surprising outcome, looking at the the actual electricity use and gas use on the right from the 2017-18 year to the 2018-19 year. And to summarize this, you can read the numbers as quickly as as I could read them out to you, but the the greens on the right of these charts were the number of schools and the quantity of electricity savings on the left and gas savings on the right that were achieved. On the left hand side was the number of schools and the increases that occurred. Same for electricity, same for gas. And the big story summarized at the bottom that in total, schools achieved $10 million worth of electricity savings, but it was offset by $7.5 million worth of electricity increases. So collectively, you save $10 million, offset by increases costing seven and a half for a net of $2.5 million. We lost three quarters of the savings that were achieved by these largely unexplained and unexpected increases. Even worse picture on natural gas, where the reductions achieved 33,582 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions reduction. But the increases across the schools where gas consumption went up more than offset that. So overall, we lost ground in terms of emissions. So as hard as everybody's working, as much as we believe that we are accomplishing, the numbers show us we're going in the wrong direction. That's the wrong trajectory. We're going backwards. And that really is the focus of this work on a go forward basis. What's causing those increases? Because if we can eliminate them, we can quadruple, quintuple the net benefit to the environment, the improvements that are being made in emissions and in utility costs over time. So this is the origin. This is the genesis of the work we're going to present to you today. Next slide please. So the project goals, the idea of strategic energy management is simply it's not to do with retrofits, it's not to do with operations, it's not to do with projects or measures. It has to do with organizational capacity, organizational alignment, management practices at the board level that affect all of the schools and all the buildings they have. Strategic energy management is what are the operational and management practice improvements that can be made to improve overall portfolios? The intent of the project is to develop, is to use the data that we have from the four participating boards and the 24 schools to develop an SEM guide, a strategic energy management guide, a step by step approach that boards can consider, adapt, and use to avoid increases, identify and avoid increases and build upon in some cases, unexpected savings that are made across the portfolios. So it's looking to make the connection between the data and improvements at the organizational level that boards can make to sustain improvements over time and to and to catch early and correct increases as and when they happen. Next slide please, Reza. The timelines of the project, we began, in fact, in the spring of of 2022. We're now at these last two stages. We've completed data analysis with the four boards. I'll acknowledge again at the end, but the amount of time and effort the boards have put into to help us with answering endless questions and and digging into anomalies and unexpected outcomes and helping us get to the point we're at today. We're now at the webinar as of as of December the 6th, and this is the presentation to school boards across the province. There were over 100 individuals registered for today. We appreciate the response and the interest. And we hope that everybody will find something useful in this work that they can carry forward to get change that trajectory to make things work better in 2023 and beyond. Next slide please. The work began with with a survey of a large number of school boards. I'm sure many of you saw it. It was the boards that had a significant number of schools that showed greater than 20% savings or increases in electricity or natural gas or both, and the survey explored whether those changes could be explained, those substantial changes could be explained by known projects or known activities or how many of them were unexplained. The 12 boards were good enough to respond at a particularly busy time. And we found that in many cases, the savings, but in almost all cases, the increases in energy use, there was no direct explanation. We wondered about estimated bills. We wondered about all kinds of different things, but the end of the day, it was very hard to explain the increases, which again moved us further into the project, allowed us to connect with the boards that ultimately took part and identified the schools of interest to be part of this work. Next slide please. So what did we find? Making a lot of time. Next slide please. So here are the four boards, and I'll probably say this two or three times before the end of this webinar, but they've all four boards have gone above and beyond, taking time with us, again, providing information, providing data. Several meetings with us to talk about findings and help provide explanations. But very simply, the number of boards that each a number of schools, sorry, that each board has are shown in the column there, the the number of schools that had experience plus or minus 20% energy savings in 2018-19 is there. The percentage of total schools is there. That was the starting point, and it led to the selection of 24 schools that you see listed there. And and in the green and the red, you can see the ones that show significant increases in, sorry, savings in electricity on natural gas use, and the red ones are the ones that show significant increases. And that has been the focus of the work throughout is what explanations can we find for the savings and the increases? And more importantly, what what can be done in terms of management practices to avoid the increases in future and consolidate, build upon the savings that have been achieved? So this is our cohort, this is our group of schools, this is our group of boards, and again, our thanks to all of you for for the work so far. Next slide please. Each each of the first meetings with the boards looked at these kind of charts. I'm not going to go, they're illustrative. We're not going to go through the details, but the red dotted lines in each case are baselines, which are 2017-18. The blue dotted lines are the actual monthly readings, and we carried those right up to date. So right up into 2022, you can see with St. Gabriel, there's a significant electricity reduction at the beginning of that period that went back to normal along the way. Obviously, COVID is making a play in here, but these charts allowed us to have thoughtful conversations with the boards about what was known about what was happening in each one of the schools over the period. You can see with St. Gabriel on the gas side, big increase in 2018-19, but it kind of normalized in the subsequent year. So you can imagine those conversations is what would have caused the increase? Did that increase continue throughout this period? And again, leading into what can be done about it? The next slide please. Just for completeness, we have one school each from 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 each of the boards, each of the four participating boards, and you can see where the blue dots are below the red dots. Those are very real savings. Are COVID, are those the electricity savings continued through the period? And with with Toronto District School Board, you can see the increases in year one, but they largely resolve themselves through the rest of the period. So we started off by looking graphically at the energy use trends during the year. We were concerned about 2018-19, but then what had happened since? Next slide please, Reza. Energy use targets are fundamental to this. So we talked about target savings. This is what this is the the methodology that's behind the savings potential from the annual reports that we published and the numbers I shared with you at the beginning. $116 million a year of savings are based upon taking all 5,000 school buildings and comparing them with these targets. And then the difference between the actual energy use in a given year and these targets is that is deemed to be the savings potential. Those numbers for individual buildings are rolled up by board, and that is how we identify the most energy efficient school boards in the province for the rankings that happen every year. So these targets are quite important. They're updated periodically, as generally the trends are getting better, even though that was a bad year. And the targets are adjusted for the variables that are listed within the space which the boards provide us that information. And all of that is published in the white paper. The methodology is there in detail in the white paper on our website, which again, if you visit Sustainable Schools, you'll see how these calculations are done, the sources of the data and so on. But this is the foundation of sustainable schools is there's a rational amount of energy, which is set at the top quartile level, which schools need, and the difference between their consumption and their targets is the savings potential. Next slide please. So applying those numbers for these 24 schools that participated here. You can see the savings potential for these. So taking each of these on the electricity side, and the darker the red the red shading, the bigger the savings potential. So each of the schools is looked at in terms of how energy efficient it is. If the school is close to, like St. Dominique there, at 8.1% or 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 Bayview, the schools that are close to the target are deemed to be energy efficient because they're meeting a good standard of consumption, of energy use intensity already. Similarly, on the gas side, there are a number of schools there which are which are pretty efficient for the schools that they are. Having made the adjustments you saw on the previous page, this is the rating, if you like, of each of the 24 schools as to how efficient they are. The savings potential in dollars you see highlighted at the bottom there is about $1,666,000. So that is the number really that justifies the level of effort that the four boards put are putting into making this work on behalf of everybody. So if all of these 24 schools meet their energy target, they will they will avoid 2,800 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions each year. So this is the rating of the schools, and we're looking to see what are the characteristics of the less efficient schools and the more efficient schools as we dig deeper into their into their operations and and their practices. Next slide please. Building automation systems were fundamental to the investigation into these schools. So again, these are purely illustrative. The top chart looks at trend logs of CO2 levels for one air handling unit in one of the schools and shows some unusual numbers. You see very high CO2 levels there that ran through multiple days at a time. And I saw an air temperature is tracked as well to see if it's varying as it gets colder or milder outside. But looking at CO2 levels, looking at fan speeds, looking at heating valve positions, the building automation system is fundamental to being able to diagnose what happened with schools either that made big increases or which achieved unexpected savings. And looking at that through the lens of the building automation system to understand what happened and what corrections can be made. So the BAS is at the heart of the ability to practice strategic energy management at the portfolio level. So there isn't enough time to go and walk through every one of the schools, hoping to find what's wrong. The BAS gives you that window into what's happening. Next slide please. Looking at one of the variables that was established through this work, where fans are going on and off on regular schedules, but then coming on in the middle of the night because the school is reaching low temperatures. What is the operating mode of the air handling systems that are running in the middle of the night? Is the outside air damper closed? Are the fan speeds reduced? Looking at heating valve positions between different air handling units in the same school and between schools. All of these things are indicators as to what is the observation and what is the corrective action that can be taken. So building automation system again, fundamental to this work. Next slide please. HVAC testing for the schools that were involved here. None of them had been through recent, which would say is the last five years, air handling unit testing. So we spent quite a lot of time talking about the value, the information that can be gleaned out of bringing in a testing contractor to measure the effects. And Reza here, our engineer working on this, has just flagged a couple of things. You can see static pressure in the middle there between the on the on the recirculation damper where the discharge from the return air fan is 0.22 inches, and just on the other side of that damper, it's 0.69 inches. We've lost half an inch of static pressure across a damper, which is just a prompt to go in there and make sure that damper is fully opening when it's supposed to be open. And you can see similarly on the left hand side, the outside air intake, when it's wide open on maximum outside airflow, it's losing two and a quarter inches of static, just trying to get the outside air into the air handling unit. So you find wonderful things in terms of air balance through testing and through unexpected static pressure losses, which go a large way to explaining inefficiency in terms of electricity use and high target savings on the electricity side of the ledger. So HVAC testing is established as a key element of strategic energy management. Next slide please. We summarized what we thought were the key variables, and we're still working on that, and we're we'll probably add a couple of longer way. But looking at fan speeds is key, and how how do they how do those fan speeds run relative to each other and relative to other schools? We expect to see speeds like these around 60%. In some cases, in many cases, those trends were unavailable. They either weren't set up or or the signals weren't coming through. So all the NAs that are a message for action from the board saying, let's get those fixed because these are key variables we need to follow. Once again, CO2 levels are a strong indicator of the amount of outside air. In this case, pretty healthy numbers, perhaps on the low side, mixed air damper position. We're beginning to connect, couldn't find it on a number of the systems, the outside air temperature, return air temperature, mixed air temperature as the best way of establishing the actual amount of outside air going into the systems. Looking at valve positions on the cooling and the heating side, and the variable I talked about earlier, the fans coming on in the middle of the night because the school is reaching low limits. AHU3 in this case was, the next level of inquiry was when it when the fans are coming on at that time, what is the fan speed? What's the mixed air damper position? And are we comfortable that we're not bringing in outside air while we're essentially just trying to keep the building warm? The outside air being a major penalty that is primarily responsible for high gas use and high target gas savings. Next slide please. So scheduling, again, was a big deal. So for every one of the air handling systems for each one of these 24 schools, we tracked how many hours a day they're running and had conversations with the boards around what is your normal operating practice. Permitting comes into play. So there are various other considerations, but found a wide range of practices around runtimes. And we established a bit of a rule of thumb that if you can reduce your average hours per per school day by 10%, you'll cut the total energy use of the school by around 5%. So these are significant numbers. Scheduling is important. So we made that correlation with and how efficient the schools were and what had happened in terms of savings or increases between the two years we were looking at. Next slide please. And finally, the the interval electric meter was 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 a really powerful tool. Once again, here, this gives us the operating profiles. We looked for each of these schools at the interval meter data and overlaid it in what's per square foot on top of each other. So each of these is seven days. The top charts are in February, the midwinter. So we can see what's happening then. Then in May, it's midseason, it's shoulder season when the heating systems are generally off, then we get a clearer view of what happens when the heating pumps go off, what happens when the electric heat in portable classrooms, for example, disappears. So there's a wealth of information that can be derived from interval metering by fairly simple analytics that can help again point you to where the opportunities are. Next slide please. So we got two little charts here that will be in the SEM guide for everybody's consideration, and this will be publicly available to everybody. Series of observations coming out of all of those findings that we're talking about scheduling, nighttime operation of fans, static pressure losses, information coming from test reports and corresponding action. So it's almost a step by step. If you find this, these are the actions to consider. Does it make implementing those actions straightforward or easy, but it points boards and schools in the right direction. So a series of observations that can be readily made from available data that points you to the corresponding action that can help again build upon good performance and avoid increases in the future and 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 resolve inefficiencies, kind of find those that savings potential that we saw on the original chart. And the same for gas. Next slide please. So once again, you can see the idea. I don't believe we've completed all the observations yet. We still have a bit of work to do to to finish that. But this general idea of here are the here's where here's how you identify schools, here's where you go and look. When you see this, then consider these actions, and then make sure the savings materialize and the school becomes efficient. Really, we're seeing it as that simple. Next slide please. So this takes us to to what will be the the opening page and for us, the heart of the the Strategic Energy Management Guide for school boards. And you can see the path through here, and in a moment, we're looking forward to exploring some of these issues with the school board participants to to talk about what was found and what the boards are seeing as the more and less important, and which we then are hoping all the school boards on the line here today will will complete the poll that we'll pull up in 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 a little while. And which we then are hoping all the school boards on the line here today will, will complete the poll that we'll pull up in, 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 in a little while. And give us your sense of which of these things are, are the areas that you believe could do the most to help improve the efficiency? The energy efficiency of your individual schools. The flow is self-evident, you, you need a, a good portfolio utility data management system. That can help you identify, uh, the target savings, the high potential buildings. And the actual savings achieved from year to year, those are kind of fundamental pieces of SEM information that you need. From there, you'll find priority schools. Some of those are top performers and those can be used for recognition. You should recognize whoever's responsible, if it's the caretaker or the designer. But also to be documented, become case studies to help set standards for the board. That you can use internally to measure your schools against each other. Uh, but the biggest interest here is the ones that have lots of room for improvement. We're looking for the ones that we should focus on to make energy and emissions reductions. So the high savings potential schools. Flows into all the pieces we've just described around HVAC investigation. So analysis of the energy bills, analysis of interval data on the left-hand side there. Looking at all of that, what happened to energy use over time? Is it bouncing up and down? Uh, or is it fairly consistent? Uh, looking at electric interval meter data, none of the schools had gas interval meter data. But Enbridge was part of the, uh, the, the, the strategic workshop around this project and is interested in helping with gas interval metering. Which gives one more lens into performance wise, the, the analytics through interval data can be very powerful. The building automation system upgrade that pointed to upgrades, which are missing metering points, trend logs that haven't been set up. Uh, operating sequence that is suboptimal. But also action indicators, how can we improve control of outside air? Improve control of fan speeds, the things that drive significant energy savings. And the third bucket of activity is around system testing, HVAC system testing. Do we have good balance on airflow, are they the CFM per square foot that we need? Our static pressure is good and finding deficiencies, all of which leads into action. So you can see the categories that, uh, that, that, that are found to have by far the biggest impact. On making savings in electricity and gas use. And where variable frequency drives don't exist, they should be installed and over time, variable volume conversions to constant volume systems. Can be installed and then we're moving towards optimal performance for every school. And closing the loop, performance verification, looking at savings over time through utility bill analysis, through looking at sub-metering, if you have it. Through looking at the interval data to verify the fact that the desired. Profiles of energy usage have been achieved, in which case you now have an efficient school. You can put it back, uh, on the shelf and take the next one down, uh, for attention. So this is the, uh, from the beginning of data analysis to the end of performance verification, this is the closed loop. Process, uh, that we're recommending should be. Should be considered for, uh, for, for, for all schools, for all school boards, for all portfolios. Find the high savings potential buildings, um, make the improvements, verify performance, then move on to the next highest and so on. So this is, if you like, the framework for strategic energy management in school boards that is the result of this project, which we. Hope will be useful to everybody and we look forward to feedback on that. Uh, let's now, if we may, move into some of the areas and I'm going to, uh, be asking. Uh, the boards that took part in this work to provide some comments themselves, next slide please, Reza. So as always, thanks to, uh, to Andrew and Kayla and Maurice and Michelle. Uh, representatives of the four boards that, uh, will pick up and speak to some of these issues, uh, with. Uh, we, we were determined to keep this to a one-hour webinar because then the participation rate goes up. And essentially if people still have questions, then we're happy to hear from them. Uh, but this will be a, a pretty concise overview of some of these areas. But we find that the experiences and the thoughts of the school boards taking part. Bring these ideas to life in, in ways that we simply can't, we could write them down in a nice flow chart. But it's hearing, uh, the, 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 the individual knowledge and experiences that makes this real. So thanks to the four of you for helping with this and let's start through the, uh, these key factors, the key SEM factors and. And where they take us, next slide please. So Kayla, I wanted to start with you with this because you've, you've been working with data, uh, more than most. Uh, I think over time, at least in, in our experience and looking at this whole data management thing. You've got the utility consumption database, but you're going beyond that, I think. And again, the goal is here that you can identify increases in savings, you can find your high potential schools. You can make use of interval data. Um, can you give us some thoughts on your experience with this and, uh, and where you think this fits? Why, why does this matter and what are you doing?
Sure, thanks Ian. Um, so I think the Simcoe County District School Board is, um, in the same boat as most. Where we've been relying on the utility consumption database that the ministry provides for the management of energy. Um, it's a great tool, it's a powerful tool, but it does rely on the LDCs to be providing the information through the hub. And that's often slow coming. Um, so then you're looking at data that's three to six months old sometimes, which can be really challenging to. To catch these increases, um, in energy use in any kind of, you know. Real time, so to speak. So, um, the Simcoe County District School Board has actually recently taken steps to prioritize. Energy management in our board in that we've now invested in our own energy management database, Energy Cap. And we've also recently hired an energy data analyst to join our team. Um, so I mean, just those two things are going to really bring us leaps and bounds ahead as far as being able to identify these large energy increases. Quicker and also the savings and be able to verify the work that we are doing on a day-to-day basis is having. Real and significant impacts. Um, interval data, we don't have a lot of that, we have a few handful of schools on Karma. And a few that, um, the LDCs have provided interval meters for, but, um, definitely something that we need to start looking at. Um, and to be a little more strategic with a long-term plan of getting, getting our buildings into interval data metering. So we can get even more concise data to pinpoint all of these opportunities.
And I think you mentioned you've also acquired a, a new software platform for managing data?
Yes, that's Energy Cap software, yeah.
So again, for everybody's consideration and holding your breath and getting ready for the poll. This starting platform of using the data to drive your energy efficiency action. Uh, we see as, that's kind of fundamental and happy to see the progress being made, let's move to the next, uh. Next piece of that, if we may, next slide. So once you got the data, it's what's the organizational response? So how does, uh, how does the identification of a jump in energy use, for example, lead to a work order, lead into? Uh, action by maintenance group, lead to closing, uh, the loop around this. So Maurice, if I could, uh, turn to you, Toronto District School Board, uh. Uh, you're kind of resourcing this area now of how do you respond to these anomalies?
Uh, yeah, that's right Ian, uh, so we're quite fortunate that we have access to interval data. And even for gas, our, our high volume accounts, uh, so we have, um, uh, gas, electricity and water interval data. Um, so we, we have a team that actually looks at, uh, average hourly usage. And compares that, uh, you know, to unoccupied periods versus occupied. And there's a lot of interesting things that come out of that. Uh, when you, when you find that unoccupied usage, uh, does not really change that much from occupied, that's usually a red flag. Uh, so, um, so we, we, we take note of that. And, uh, however, as you've mentioned, uh, it's great to understand where you have a problem, how do you fix it? And so we had a big gap, okay, because we didn't really know. Uh, how to effectively take that information and actually make changes to the way we operate the, our, our, our schools. Uh, and that's where the, uh, building systems help desk is going to come in. And that's a, a pilot project that we have underway right now, where we'll have, uh, people, um, uh, available. To, uh, take calls and questions and concerns directly from caretakers and then work with those caretakers. To identify and resolve either issues that, that originate from them or that we glean from our interval data. Uh, so they're going to be the conduit that, 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 uh, connect our data to actual school operations. And then, uh, make recommendations if repairs are needed. Uh, to get the, uh, right tradespeople out, to make the right repairs at those particular schools. So that's what we've been working on and, um, I hope that answers your question. That's the challenge, having great data is wonderful. Uh, if you can't execute something with the data, then it's just data, right? That's, um.
And the Toronto District School Board has got, uh, I, I think actually tens of millions of dollars a year of savings potential. So it's not that hard to make the business case on a board your size. Michelle, can we, uh, look at Conseil Scolaire, uh, Catholic de Nouvelle Ontario? Uh, only around thirty schools, so much smaller in scale, but, uh, your board is one of the most efficient, always in the top twenty of the rankings of. Sustainable schools, so the same question. Uh, what's your organizational response to anomalies? How do you stay on top of your widespread, uh, smaller, but, but very widespread portfolio of schools?
Um, hi Ian, thanks. Um, so, um, we do not have, um, uh, interval data. Um, uh, so, uh, most of it is complaints, uh, you know, driven with, uh, comfort or somebody observes, uh, a machine's not working or something. They would do a work order. Um, then, uh, one of our trades, we have one HVAC technician, one plumber with oil heat. Uh, ticket and one electrician and, uh, for the moment, we have two controls techs, so. Um, between getting a work order, uh, figuring out what it is, uh, they talk to each other to make sure that, you know, if somebody puts something on manual. Let, let us, let the other one know so that he can go fix it. And we, we've been, um, repeating the same, uh, for the last like twenty-five years. Is that the energy dollars and the salaries dollars are from the same pot, the operating pot. And, uh, the more that energy is saved, um, it lessens the, uh, impact on, uh, having to cut, um. Um, you know, uh, jobs or whatever. So we've been pretty successful at that for the past, uh, you know, twenty, twenty-five years. Uh, but now due to declining enrollment, it's, it's a bit, uh, we can't, can't keep up with that. But anyways, uh, uh, something like, um, uh. If, if, you know, uh, I said it before, if you put something on manual, you gotta let, let them know. Um, uh, let's talk to each other about what the issues we're, we're getting, sometimes it might be cold in one end. Oh, maybe there's a lot of drafts or whatever, the, the seals around the windows or whatever, so even the carpenters and, um, are, are involved in that too. And the other thing too is that, uh, our I perform more performance schools, uh, we don't recognize them enough. Um, we, we document them, but we don't recognize them enough, so.
That's, that's helpful, thank you, the, uh, so again, for the folks getting ready for the poll. Think about organizational response, where does that fit in the, and, and the priorities for making? Real material significant improvements, uh, can we go to the next slide please? So building automation system, we touched on that, BAS best practices. Um, uh, every board we talk to has a very different approach to building automation and different levels of, of sophistication. But Andrew, if we can, uh, turn to you on this, at, 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 at Rand Holdeman Norfolk Catholic District School Board, so many letters. Um, I, you've again got a small workforce there and you've got, uh, you're over thirty schools. Talk about how you use building automation and the areas you think you might be able to make more use of it going forward.
Sure, thanks Ian, um, you can hear me okay, right?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay, great. Uh, yeah, so our board is fortunate enough to have, um, fully integrated DDC controls in every single building. Uh, it's also the same platform, so we use Schneider structuralware, um, which is nice for consistency. Uh, and basically it gives you the ultimate flexibility, our, our boards invested heavily in, uh, building automation. Um, because we recognize the value that it brings. Um, it gives us flexibility for, for identifying and troubleshooting issues, trending data, setting schedules. Um, and global, um, set point adjustments, which is, which is really great, um. We, uh, we have it all set up remotely and so I can pretty much view something anywhere, anytime from my phone, my. My laptop, anywhere remotely I can get on and, um, I've kind of been working with custodians to get them read-only access. Um, so I've got more eyes kind of looking at systems, identifying things that, that may seem out of the ordinary. Um, and then as far as scheduling, I'm able to schedule everything pretty tight. Um, if I need to adjust outdoor air damper positions, I can do that. Um, and then I've got, uh, capability to trend. Um, if we, we know which buildings are, are poor performing, um, through our data. We have lots of data, um, but this gives you the capability to kind of trend and really investigate. Deep dive of how your systems are performing, uh, are they performing as per the intended design? Um, so that's kind of how I'm leveraging it. Like you said, it's a pretty small workforce here, it's just myself that oversees it all. So I do rely on, um, custodians kind of logging on and, and seeing how day-to-day operations are. Um, so I think if my recommendation would be to invest, uh, if you're not already invested in automation systems is to get it. Because it gives you the ultimate flexibility and, uh, control for your systems.
And once again, the, the SEM goals listed here are first have a system, but then. The key things you can do with the building automation system that'll.
Yeah, it's really, yeah, it's, it's quite flexible, like I said, like you can do a lot of things. We've tied our community use schedules, um, to eBay, so when users, user groups are putting in the permit. Our systems are operating as per that, that logic that they're coming on. Um, whereas before we kind of just ran things from like six AM until ten PM. Um, so just even stuff like that, like if you can think about it, there's probably a way to do it on the automation system.
Perfect, next slide please. So sub-metering, I'm, I'm not going to ask anybody about this because at this point, nobody is using it. But I, I'll just share with everybody and very interested in your feedback on this. That, um, when you, when you've got sub-metering on key variables, this is not comprehensive, it's just looking key variables, fans, portables, pumps. Uh, and when you look at your interval meter data and you can start relating the pieces of the pie. Um, so the, the goals here that we would propose to you, and I'm looking forward to the poll where you can tell us, does that sound credible or not? We believe that further sub-metering will be helpful. In identifying opportunities through looking at key level, key, key metrics like your fan power. Wow, that's a lot of watts per square foot, um. All the, finding the heating pumps and saying that they're three times as much, um, fan pumping power in one school as another. And developing metrics that you can then take those watts per square foot numbers give. Uh, when you've got a big renovation or a new school coming along, give to your design team. So I'm just gonna put that out for your consideration, everybody, that when this part of the poll. Um, uh, we're interested in your thoughts about whether there is potential to help you improve efficiency. By making greater use of sub-metering, in which case we will explore this further in twenty twenty-three. But let's move to the next slide please. Uh, HVAC testing, once again, uh, none of the schools in the survey, uh, uh, or in this project had had this done recently. It is fundamental to making sure you've got the proper balance between supply, return, exhaust airflow. You've got the right amount of supply airflow per square foot, you find excessive pressure losses. And you find all those leaks and crazy things within systems, you know, that lousy turning veins and that, that are kind of sucking all the static out of the system and so on. Deficiencies that can be, uh, corrected. I'd be, uh, interested, uh, Kayla, you've done some of this work in the past as to how useful you found that. And, and then Andrew, I'd love a couple of thoughts about whether you see potential for you with your finite resources and finding opportunities there. With, with the conversations we've had so far, but Kayla first.
Yeah, sure, um, so the Simcoe County District School Board, we've used, um, this model that you're presenting today of, uh, strategic energy management for many years. Um, identifying our high energy savings potential schools. And then following through that flow chart to identify where those savings opportunities are. And the, the testing and air balancing is a key part of that process. Um, and you know, m- most of the time we find results that are not surprising and it's simple balancing of system. Simple balancing of systems, dampers and et cetera, but sometimes it is really dramatic findings. Um I know Ian, that's one of your favorite stories of. Finding the collapsed duck work at Bear Creek. Um some pretty extreme static pressure issues in that school. Um. But it resulted in really significant energy savings. So um I think, you know, some of these uh. Anecdotal stories have made us believers in TAB and uh we really do see it as an important part of the process.
Great. And and Andrew, you you've seen some of this um through this project. It doesn't ring any bells as to opportunities for. For your board to to make improvements?
For sure. We haven't really done much of it, like we can definitely do better. Um anything that we've done has been derived from occupant discomfort. Um in which we've found lots of things like failed dampers or reheat valves that are stuck open. Um so up in the new year, I'll be looking to leverage some of the new IASO recommissioning funding because I do see the value in. And ensuring that your building is performing as per its intended design. Um and we find things all the time. Um we just haven't taken a a holistic approach. To target our highest users, uh which I'll be looking to do in the near future.
Great, thank you. So la- last, the six, six um key SEM factors, the next slide please. Is is always the magic question, right? All this is really cool, really interesting and sounds very logical and things we should be done uh if we only had the time. So time is everything. So uh again, this last uh SEM. Uh factor that we had there is internal capacity to the boards and this is a part of the poll for all of the boards here. Do you have sufficient resources? You heard Kayla mentioning adding staff. Uh Simcoe County is a. I guess a mid to large size board, uh some of the smaller boards uh. Uh uh making do with people just uh uh doing what they can to make improvements. And do you have enough training? For employees? Um do you have the right training to help them uh? Understand this kind of process and be able to do these reviews, these analytics and so on. So. A final question is going to be around internal capacity. Do you have enough capacity and do you have the training needed for those? And while I was going to use that piece for. Uh to get a final thought from all four panelists, I'm I'm uh I'm reluctantly going to pass on that in the interest of time and. To get on to the poll, but uh as we move to the poll. Uh again, thanks to all four of you, not just for doing this today, but for the amount of again, time and effort and thoughtful. Uh contributions you've made to this project throughout. We're pretty happy with where it's ended up, but uh. Uh couldn't do any of these things without you. So there'd be a. A silent virtual applause coming from everybody on the line, uh but let's move on if we may to the poll. So this is for everybody to contribute. The question is. Uh for each of the SEM goals, does it present for your board? The greatest opportunity for improving energy savings because that will be then the focus for sustainable schools. In twenty twenty three and and the sponsors and the organizations that care to help you. Uh in focusing our efforts. So can we open up the poll, please Natalie? So it all looks pretty darn important. Okay, this is um. This is super helpful. We will be uh. As I say, we will we will absorb this and be reviewing it with uh. With our partners in crime through this whole Sustainable Schools initiative to uh set priorities for next year. So thanks for. For sharing that information with us. And again, this recording will be out there, so you can. Uh you'll be able to see the results on a go forward basis, but this is extremely helpful. Thank you. So we can. Close the poll and 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 get into closing. So the next steps for everybody's interest as we uh as we complete this project, which is always the first step. Uh going towards uh what comes next. So we haven't saved any energy yet. We've identified opportunities. Uh will um the 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 four participating boards are being punished for their good work by a a much more comprehensive survey that we're developing now that will. Uh get from them. So a lot more granular around their findings, their conclusions. Their help forward and again, we really appreciate their guidance and working through this. We'll be finalizing the guide. It'll be a fairly simple. Uh document, a tool that you'll be able to take off the shelf whenever the time is appropriate and. And help develop your internal capacity to do this kind of work. And we'll be reflecting this poll and the other feedback. Uh within it and with the participants, uh we're inviting them to work with us through twenty twenty three to implement the improvements that they've seen through the project. And a year from now, we look forward to reporting back to everybody on. This is what we learned. This is how much improvement's been made. These are the savings that have been made and probably an update to the SEM guide. Based on that experience of twenty twenty three. So a lot still to happen and we need to close the loop and show that this work will actually drive. Savings in high savings potential schools. Next slide please Natalie. So you uh you can see the website address there. Again, everything I've referred to, including the the previous. Uh Sustainable Schools Top Performing Board Reports are all found at sustainableschools.ca. The white paper is there, our case studies, our news, uh all of those are there. Please do stay connected. And stay in touch. We will welcome everybody's feedback on what you've heard today. So you can contact us through the website. Uh Natalie, uh you can contact her directly. She's uh. Uh the project manager for this work that's ongoing and uh and we'll always welcome hearing from people as to uh. As to uh next steps and progress being made and where our priorities are and ideally how you can get involved. Uh you know, sustainable schools relies. Entirely on the people who step up to take part in the work. We believe then it's a. General benefit to all school boards everywhere, but uh we will, we will welcome uh your reaching out to us, feedback correspondence. Uh meanwhile. Once again, my sincere, my sincere thanks to our panelists and the boards and the effort. That you've already put into this and as always, the best is yet to come. And uh greatly looking forward to continuing work through twenty twenty three. Thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful day.